You might say good evening to everyone and welcome you to our second meeting in February. It's always this part I mean with our prayer. This is part I mean that you just have to just pay and we'll give you each time to exit the room. You will not be taking a break in this prayer. Most awesome and amazing God, we thank you God just for allowing us to make it here, God. God, we ask God to allow your Holy Spirit to come down in this place. Allow us all of God to make decisions, uh, go bring the city to pray in front of God with your Holy Spirit through your power, God. God, we understand that we can't do that without you. Uh, we ask God that you would best, uh, this city, bless this, this state, God, that we in there we're in and also bless the United States of America. And God, we just say thank you. Uh, we say this prayer, your son Jesus, thank you, and everybody say amen.
Mr. Mayor.
Turn that up some.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
I think you got it in the word. So I finally heard God's over hit with pray.
Next on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Counselor, you have the agenda in front of you. If you would, uh, I'd take a motion and a second to approve your agenda.
Motion.
It's the second, any further discussion? No further discussion, although the paper that we done, I raise your right hand. Also, Counselor, you have a minute from February third, twenty twenty five, if you're in your package, wait up. I give you a minute to read over those who have not done so. Uh, once you're done reading, I'll accept the motion and a second to approve those meetings.
Motion to approve, man.
Second.
It's the second, no further discussion. No further discussion, although the paper that we done, I raise your right hand. Then with the decision, thank you so much. At this moment, we'll open up our public hearing for House Bill five eighty one, City Manager.
Uh, man, here's, um, we go through a lot of people, um, that makes this true, but, um, we're gonna, um, explain House Bill five eighty one, um, today has a few slides, we'll try to, um, get it in a reasonable amount of time real quick, um, then the City Manager like recommendation, um, I was, um, y'all should have packages inside, um, you know. All right, here's the background, where this comes from. The legislature's entered last year's session concern about driving property damage assessment and interim profit taxes. Senator Littler wanted to measure control rapid increase in property assessment. House Bill looked to expand sales tax option. Various proposal also resulted in H B, H D five eighty one. The law was signed on April eighteenth and then passed as a referendum in November. Uh, major components of this, um, bill is a statewide floating home state exemption. It's a new local option sales tax. Remember, we already do have local option sales tax, and one of the major tenets of it is the offset profit taxes. And also it adds another, um, profit tax procedure change. Um, it was continued upon the passage of constitutional amendment, which it did. Um, the bill took effect January first, twenty twenty five. And part of that bill, um, implements a statewide floating home state exemption for all local government, counties, cities, school board. A floating home state exemption is a special type of home state exemption designed to offset or reduce increases and attach the value to the property. It is also referred to as a base year of value year offset exemption. Let's say when exemption coming to effect, and you live in the house where you have a home state, your, uh, property value, your exemption will be based upon the value at that time. Um, let's say it's at one forty during that base year, it'll be, um, one forty, the forty percent of that one forty. It works by increasing the value of exemption to offset inflation. For example, if a property had a taxable value of a hundred thousand and the taxable value increased the following year due to market change to one ten, uh, I asked that people really take a look at that, the value, let's say right back, increased to one ten. But if we were under the exemption, the one ten of taxable value will stay. The exemption floats to be worth ten thousand of taxable value, so the taxpayer still pays on the regular base year value of ten thousand dollars, I mean a hundred thousand dollars. The floating exemption is unique because the base year value is adjusted and increased by the rate of inflation determined by the state level of commission. And likely it will be by the consumer price index. If we take the same property with a hundred thousand dollar taxable base year value and the C P I is two percent, then the following year, then the base value of a hundred thousand maybe increases by option two percent to give an adjusted base value of a hundred and two. The exemption floats on that will gonna be eight thousand dollars of assessed value, so the taxpayer will pay on a taxable value of a hundred and two thousand year two. Now, this is only talking about exempt property, does not talk about commercial agriculture, um, any other non, our own home state property, I'm a City Attorney.
That's right, and essentially your primary residence, even secondary residence would, would not.
For homes first to receive this exemption in tax year twenty twenty five, the base year assessed value will be the twenty twenty four assessed value. So whatever the twenty twenty, twenty four assessed value, if the city optioned, that will be your assessed value. For homes receiving the exemption in later years, the base year assessed value will be the assessed value for the, for immediately preceding year. Similar to the other home state exemptions, the value will, will be reset when the home is sold and adjusted with substantial profit change. You know, once you have the, once you have an exemption on this property, you cannot transfer to your new home. If the, if you're paying ninety thousand a year, and you buy a new home, it might, it, it, it might, if the size and value might differ, your new home is gonna be the market rate. And it might be more than your older home. So the effect of H D five eighty one home state exemption, the tax value of a home may only increase at the rate of inflation each year. Essentially controlling this, essentially controlling this to control how much the value of a home can increase annually. Homes already committed a home state will receive this, this exemption automatically. Non-home state property will continue to be valued at market, at fair market. And it says this, this new floating home state exemption is in addition to and not in league of all non-floating home state exemptions. This will not repeal or replace existing home state exemption. If you already have a home state exemption, this will not repeal or replace it. If there is an existing local floating home state exemption, the taxpayer will receive whichever one is the greatest of the two exemptions. As it says, existing local exemptions will not be effective. Also part of that bill is any building authority may lift an opt out of the floating home state exemptions created by House Bill five eighty one by following that procedure. Similar to the public notification of a tax increase, when a full rollback is not taken, the local building must advertise to duck three public hearings of intent to opt out and later adopt the resolution. Must file a resolution to the Secretary of State by March first, twenty twenty five. Um, there is a bill in the Georgia General Assembly where they are trying to extend the date for the opt out to May the first, twenty twenty nine. So there's not a guarantee whether it will pass or anything, so, you know, you can wait or whatever, but as it stands now, on March the first, twenty twenty five is the date. But there, there's legislation that is, um, trying to push that day to May the first, twenty twenty nine.
Of course, question before you go, uh, uh, Mr. Hay, you just said that it's in, uh, discussion, delaying this into twenty twenty nine?
Yes, the, um, the bill will allow local buildings to opt into opt out.
So the, the bill is, that's going.
So, um, the, the legislation that's being looked at right now, has not passed yet, um, would still have the home state exemption in five eighty one take effect. But rather than being locked in, if we don't take action this year, it would give us the chance to take action next year, twenty twenty seven, up, up to twenty twenty nine. To, before we be one hundred percent locked in. But it wouldn't delay the start, it would not delay the home state exemption going to affect, um, for these next four years.
So, so, well, my. Saying something out of the mouth, of course. So, well, my next question is, this inter, has this, uh, discussion came up since our last, their prejudice with this?
About the, um, the legislation in the General Assembly, I think it started, uh, it filed about the second week of, of start of the legislative. So it will, it will pass favorably out of the House Committee, it hasn't even reached the House floor yet, which would be the next, um, next avenue. Then once it reaches the House floor, it has to go over to the Senate, and then they have to sign it to the committee. After they sign the committee, gotta report it favorably out of the committee, and then it has to be, um, has to be vote, voted on in there. I'm gonna be honest, the way the legislature move, move, I don't think they'll have it by March, I mean March the first.
Okay, well, my, my, my next question really would be, I guess, all my questions really is, uh, our attorney's will, I can, see, I'm, I'm. We're saying it's end up that going to the bank, March, what did I see there? March of twenty twenty five?
Yes, sir.
That's next month, that's within a couple of weeks.
Yes, sir.
But I'm hearing you all saying that it's in discussion, maybe putting this off until like twenty twenty nine. Why would we even be? Why would we even be? Do we have to, it's not that we have to go on this tonight, uh, I know it's the second reading on it, uh, I don't know whether Mel's staying with this or whether we're gonna take it, you know, to hold on tonight, uh, but, you know, this is kind of like, through me and Luke, you know, now you saying that, we looking at, can look, they're looking at maybe spreading out maybe the vote into twenty twenty nine, what I'm saying.
Right, sir.
That's, that's, that's another election cycle. This election cycle is in November this year, so that'll be the next elections. You, you're from my map, right, oh, oh, yeah.
Right, so, you, you're very great point, and, and this bill, Mr. Man, one for a loop a little bit. There's been different bills that have been, um, looked at this session. This current bill, um, that was extended to twenty twenty nine, just came out of session, did come out of the, the committee, uh, most recently after our last year. Uh, but it was getting kicked around before that, uh, as well, but, um, but yes, your, your point's right, and that Council, like, is put in a spot where, where you may have to take action not knowing whether, whether you have to, if you still have this March first deadline, or if it could get moved back. And, uh, and so, you're, you're exactly right. Now, I will say, as Mr. Hay stated, we, it's a very good chance that we will not clarity on whether this new bill passes before the March first deadline. So, so the safest, I would suggest the safest thing would be to operate under, operate as if this bill was not going to pass. Um, because we don't know, we don't know if it will, um, and to count on it, to count on it passing without knowing anything more from the General Assembly, I mean, it's a dangerous, dangerous thing.
Like, um, the country goes ahead, you know, like, um, and they don't, so we don't know what they, they'll be told or whatever.
Thank you, it's, so, let's try to get some good information.
Counselor, Counselor Miller, else your question, we, we won't vote on this tonight. This is our third hearing because it was required that we have the three hearing just in case the March first deadline is made or kept. Um, and if it comes to a situation where the March first deadline is in effect, then we'll have a call meeting to come in and vote on it. So we're not asking for you to vote on it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
As an additional note, the decision to opt out independent among local government, the county, city, and school board may elect to decide whether to opt out. The decision of whether to opt out will not impact the other local government home state exemption. This will result in comparable homes having di- different taxable value. First, if you go in the suburb area, and each home is built the same, everything is the same, with the exemption is, the next door neighbor could be renting, renting the home, and the other neighbor could own it. The homeowner who owns, owns it, he will, he will be covered under the exemption. But the person who's renting that same home would not be, the value would be incomparable. And it's only gonna, um, you know, as long as the people stay inside the home, that's, that's how long they would have a floating exemption. So far, it's the decision permanent, um, yes, no action is needed by a local government to have a home state exemption applied. If it is approved, then though there's one's to opt out here it's bad, currently there is no future method to opt out. If a local government opts out, there is no future method to opt in to the House Bill five eighty one exemption, of course, a similar home state exemption can still be done in a traditional manner. Also, the second part of the bill is the local option called FLOX, a local option, sales tax. Kind of works the same way as our current loss. Um, if I'm correct, uh, Mr. City Attorney, is one of the tenets of the, um, not FLOX, the local, local option sales tax is for, um, give a, um, reprieve or, uh, uh, break on the property, possibly on the property taxes. If, somewhat, because we have to do a, um, rollback, if I could, let me look on this thing right here. But I don't have it, but we have the last five years rollbacks from the city of, um, Greensboro. And from the past five years, you all have not ever raised the miller rate over the rollback. You have always rolled it back, and you were able to do that because of the growth in the digest. And let me give, let me, let me show you one example from this year too. The estimated value of home state property in the, um, tax year twenty twenty three was twenty eight million, six hundred sixty six dollars, six, six hundred sixty three dollars. That, that was the value in, um, home state property. The actual digest wrote, um, was thirty two thousand. Do you see the, the, the difference? If we were under the C I P rate, which we got that off of the, um, labor statistic, um, um, consumer price index was two, two, at two percent, you would have only been allowed, the taxable value of this property would only been allowed was, was twenty nine million from twenty eight to twenty nine million versus the thirty two billion where the actual digest was at. That, that's different, three million, one hundred ninety eight dollars, I mean, pre, pre million, one hundred ninety eight thousand and ninety eight dollars. And with a miller rate of five point two six five, that's sixteen thousand. And if you look at it, as the years go by, it increases. Remember, your profit tax only covers eight hundred and some, I think eight forty or some thousand dollars a year. First, you take out sixteen from that eight hundred thousand. I mean, you, you gotta look at the numbers, so there is an increase of, um, potential revenue loss as, as the years go by. It's, it gets greater and greater and greater and greater. But looking at the five year tax rate, I don't have that table to say, but I will able to show you that you'll see the, most of the growth came in the residential area, and most of that, you know, will contribute to, um, home state properties. So those, those are, those are the, that's, those are the estimated revenue impact of that bill. This doesn't take into account the FLOX tax or anything, and the reason being is because that tax is negotiated and given by the counties, by cities and counties, and also has to be approved by the votes. So for the last five years, the city has not raised the miller rate. You were always able to roll it back, roll it back, but still at the same time have broken your digest and revenue. That, that is all I have, um.
Any more questions coming from the Council? Any more questions coming from the Councils? There are no questions coming from the Councils, any questions coming from our citizens at this time in regards to House Bill five eighty one? Any questions at this time regarding House Bill five eighty one?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Is the city's position that you want to opt out of this, in this? If I maybe want is adopted, then that increase in lost revenue, if we stay where we are, then we're gonna lose that additional revenue because the percentage of increase stays the same across that two percent revenue thing.
To my understanding, if we opt in, then we lose that revenue.
That, that's, that's, that's if you opt in, that, that is estimated, the consumer price index. As you, as you remember, the tricky part of that is we just come out with a lot of inflation. Let's say inflation is at eight percent or thirteen percent, then that is what the value cannot increase, have increased at that rate. And believe it or not, go for that or not to, you know, even on the pericent, usually going to increase ten or thirteen percent, most time it don't. So that can, that, that, that potentially can be a big increase.
And it states right now, a house at a hundred thousand goes two percent per year, hundred and two.
No, that's, that is, that, that will be the, the basis that will be set up by the rate of in- inflation. Whatever the Revenue Commissioner said, the city wouldn't set it anymore based upon the statute, the Revenue, the Revenue Department Commissioner, he will set the consumer, he will, he will set that rate based on the consumer price index.
That's on the H B five eighty?
Yes, the Revenue Commissioner is there.
Now, if we opt out of five eighty one, that's what you're considering?
Yes, sir.
A hundred thousand house goes to a hundred and two the next year.
Whatever the market said to that.
Whatever C P I is.
No, the market, like, it'll be the market rate, whatever the market rate is, um, with all.
What's the two percent?
The two percent is the consumer price index, that's, that's, that's what you would be limit that, or whatever, whatever consumer price index. It's not really always gonna be two, it could be three, a lot, inflate, whatever inflation.
I understand. Right now it's two.
It's, it's two right now.
So the house that is being taxed already is one hundred, and, and C P I is two next to, then it's hundred and two, right?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. Is there any more questions coming from our citizens?
Mr. Mayor, anyone else need comment to, you know, questionable comments?
Anything else coming from our citizens? City Manager, you still trying to get something together?
Well, I'm already showed the five year limit, um, showed how the city, the city has been consistent with keeping the miller rate down, that, you know, in the digest, the city has not, the city has not risen in taxes or anything. So y'all have, um, kept the miller rate down or whatever, and, you know, really have benefited from the market growth in the digest.
We'll proceed, if you can come back to it, City Manager, if you find it, we'll come back to it in a longer time. At this time, we'll go back to our regular session. Next item on our agenda is new business is a proposed budget and amended resolution. City Manager, you have your opinion.
Yes, Mayor, Counselor, this, this is mainly for audit purposes, um, that is, um, it allows us to be able to, um, amend the budget, you know, for some departments are over, some are under. This is just for the audit purposes that allows us to have a balanced budget. When we get ready to do the, um, the audit. And it is recommended because a lot of state grants and everything, they do read, uh, your, um, fiscal year audit, and if you don't have that, we ran into the problem in success, we didn't have it, they will, they will send it back and say, hey, you need to have, you know, what's wrong with this, why is it out of order? But this is recommended, and this is fiscal year twenty four, the, uh, past fiscal year that we just left. So we need to do a, um, amended budget resolution. And, and, and you notice, looking at our last audit we just finished, that was a final of the expenditures over what we had budgeted. And that happens time to time in one, in one department, Illinois.
Counselor Murphy requests help from our City Manager. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the amended resolution.
Motion to approve. Second.
It's the second, any further discussion? No further discussion, although the paper that we done, I raise your right hand. Yeah, with the decision, thank you so much. G I utility, A, State Route forty four.
Listen, man, what you have funny, um, against the information purpose, but as you know, um, within the G I, um, we would thank the Lord who they did do it through the, but we was, I able, as, I can't say baby, but we did, um, for the upgrade and, um, removal of the alignment with, with, um, with the wide number forty four, our con- contribution is only, um, twenty percent, um, of the, um, relocation cost, um, that is like, we, that is, um, gonna be, um, a total of four hundred eighty two thousand nine hundred eighty nine dollars and ninety two cents. A total of, um, cost, two hundred and fifty two of it at any time, that is a whole, um, relocation be done by a developer. And the city is on the hook of, um, excuse me, the two hundred and thirty three seventy five is for, um, an upgrade improvement by a developer. But the city's cost is only gonna be two hundred and fifty two thousand, six hundred fourteen dollars and ninety two cents. Out of, um, out of the, um, one, one, you know, over one million dollars, um, total relocation costs. relocation costs. So, that water sewer, and, um, if you can see it, I think it also includes the gas charges. Yes, gas, gas charges on that too, Mister Mayor.
The total relocation cost, we just gave one more there. I'm looking at, hey, doing that second.
Uh, uh, that's one point four there. And we, we only require two, we gonna do just, um, we, we, we're just gonna, gonna do, um, a, um, for the city in responsible, um, it says, if you look at the first, the total reconstruction, relocation construction costs, one point four, really, one point five million, out of which any kind of replacement costs is one point two, the upgrade development costs, two hundred thirty thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars, in which the city of Greensboro is responsible for.
Two thirty.
You, you breaking down, state plays are eighty percent, and we're only gonna play twenty percent.
Hey, so I'm looking at second page under I two, under I two, it says total relocation cost for a city of Greensboro is four hundred eighty-two thousand, nine hundred eighty-nine dollars ninety-two cents.
Yes.
Is that for second page or is that?
We, we had to put the developer cost in there, the engineer had to develop the cost because, um, the development is coming up to that, they upgraded the line to a, to a twelve-inch sewer line, and we had to put that in there. If the developer don't, don't ever upgrade it, we still can keep it on the, at the same, the same, the same, excuse me, we just keep the same, um, line in there. So, that, that is why that, that cost is at the engineer, they put that upgrade in there, and that's supposed to be borne by the developer.
All right, so where, where do we get it from, Mr. Pro, four eighty-two, nine eighty-nine? That way, we don't have to come back and guess.
Oh, yeah, yes. This is just for informational purpose, look, let you know what, um, what we have to do it, and, um, there is, um, a misconception out there at utility aid, every time they come in and, um, do a Y road, if your utilities are in the right of it, the state does a reimbursement. I mean, it's not, it's not obligated to reimbursement if you're in the right of it, so the city of Greensboro was lucky to be able to get reimbursement. And this was started when I, you know, when I came, but we were lucky, hey, we were lucky to be able to get reimbursement at being in the right of it.
Uh, Mister Hayes, I'm kinda, I'm kinda, I'm kinda like in line with, man, we should, should we prove it four hundred eighty-two?
Yes.
Is it the two fifty-two?
Just, just, um, just, man, yes, approve four eighty-two.
The bill, still we have to come back.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, request coming from city manager regards to GDI utility aid for State Route forty-four. I entertain a motion to approve the spending four hundred eighty-two, four hundred eighty-two thousand, nine hundred eighty-nine dollars ninety-two cents, uh, for the relocation and upgrade costs on D G two.
Motion to approve, second.
It's been second, any further discussion? No further discussion, all those papers that have been on my resume right here. Man, Mr. City, thank you so much. Next is our water withdrawal agreement.
Testament, um, counsel, this is agreement that, um, many mayor, um, have looked at and worked on with Georgia Power regarding, um, they have a new, um, system in place where they are redoing the contracts and making them, um, match up with, uh, water withdrawal permit, and also, you know, they're looking at a pro rate share, uh, how, as far as recreational shoreline that they have in their reservoir, so they came up with a new agreement where the city per year, I think the cost is, is, um, twenty-three, hold on a minute, I'm gonna make sure I'm correct, um, twenty-six or twenty. We have to pay per year, twenty-six thousand, seven hundred four dollars and thirty cents, that is a storage fee, um, for, um, our water really is, um, two point nine one six million gallons a day. Um, the city is, um, grandfathered in for three hundred eighty-four thousand, um, M G Ds a day, um, so, um, we don't have to, um, allocate the funds for that, that is where the city is, um, grandfathered in, but we do have to pay for the, um, other costs, two point nine M G B per, per year, I mean, excuse me, per day, and the cost of twenty-six thousand, seven hundred four dollars and thirty cents, um, per annual cost.
Just to clarify, we're permitting at about three million per day.
Yes, that is right, Mister Mayor, permitting three million.
And so, Counselor Murphy, this agreement is saying that, uh, Georgia Power will no longer hold our water for us for free, that they're charging us about twenty-six almost thirty-three, um, water reserves, and.
What is it, Mister Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Have, have, uh, attorney looked over this agreement and?
Yes, sir, we did, um, and, and it, it contains about what we expect. I think the, the primary difference that, that Georgia Power talks about with the financials. We did look over, we did look over, I'm like this, sir. This agreement runs, um, I think for six, about six years, so it'll take us through twenty thirty-four, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you, sir. Just to add, counsel, uh, most counsel, uh, we're, if we don't accept the agreement, then we lose our reserve, and there's no telling when we can, we can get it back.
And that, that's true, Mayor, um, we, um, and as a matter of fact, they don't have any excess capacity on the lake now. Everybody has water capacity, I mean, there's no more excess, like, if we was to come up and say we want another billion gallons a day, they don't have it. So, really and truly, um, if you look down I twenty corridor, I think Greensboro is one to one that does have a lot of excess capacity in the water, two row, three million, and we lose, and we use less than probably a million a day. So, there is a lot of capacity that the city does have.
So, when does this go into effect? This thing will be there?
Maybe this year.
This, this year or this fiscal year?
This calendar, this calendar.
Calendar year.
So, did we budge for this?
No, we did, we did not, we just had to make provisions, catch up or whatever again, but it, we had to make a vision for it. And this, and this, and this happened after the budge was already adopted, we weren't in negotiation with the, uh.
And, and I would like to add this, uh, counsel, Georgia, Georgia Power has gone up on us, and I would say you look, we'll have to look very closely at our rates to make sure we can cover this, this, uh, this bill that Georgia Power's giving us. So, at this time, there's, of course, I entertain a motion, uh, for our mayor to sign the three million with Georgia Power. Ever lost the word with Georgia?
Motion, second.
It's been second, any further discussion? No further discussion, all those papers that have been on my resume right here. Yeah, Mr. City, thank you so much. Old business, second reading, uh, of zoning ordinance proposed, amendment at the antique store, two hundred three hundred on Main Street, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mister Mayor and counsel. Um, this is second reading, as Mr. Mayor stated, um, this ordinance is, um, does just two things as relates to how we regulate antique stores, um, within the city. First, um, it removes provisions on sale of certain, um, certain name guns, um, that can be sold, um, and then also it allows for the, the holding of onsite options, um, at, at antique stores, no more though than, than twelve a year. So, the idea was, um, we'd expect, uh, about one a month. Um, that's, that's generally what the ordinance does, and this has been picked around for a little while, I don't have any extra questions, question to add.
Any questions from the city attorney, regardless of? No questions, at this time, I entertain a motion to second to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
It's been second, further discussion? No further discussion, all those papers that have been on my resume right here. Yeah, Mr. City, thank you so much. Second, it's the second reading about proposed amendment, home rate, operational tax fees on, uh, city attorney, um, city manager.
This is another second reading, counsel. Um, essentially, what this ordinance does, um, is, is when someone applies for a occupation tax certificate, um, the way, the way the ordinance currently reads, um, is if someone applies for a ticket, for a certificate in the latter half of the year, um, they would, they would still be paying the full, full amount for that year. So, this, um, I think, I think it's broken down accordingly, um, city managers that read it.
Yes, it is broken forward.
Um, if, it's, so it'd be done on a periodic basis, if someone applies for a, for the first three months of the year, they pay the full amount, um, there'll be seventy-five percent of the full amount between April and June and, and so forth. Um, and so, again, it's, um, the idea is that, that people will be paying for that, that fraction of the year when they're getting started.
Any questions for our attorney? No, at this time, I entertain a motion to second to approve.
Motion to approve, sir.
It's been second, any further discussion? No further discussion, all those papers that have been on my resume right here. Thank you so much. Anything coming from council at this time? Anything coming from council? At this time, I would like to encourage our citizens, those of you that have not done so well, to remind you that we have our very urgent meeting on February the twenty-second at the six o'clock hour, uh, the attire is formed, you can go purchase your tickets online, and you can also contact my mutual wife to, uh, purchase your tickets as well. Uh, this event will be given back to two of our non-profits here in the city of Greensboro, will be given back to our boys and girls, who we know is a great help to our youth, and it'll also be given back to the organization called Neighbors, Helping Neighbors, who help people repair their homes at no cost. And with this, this neck, this neck of Helping Neighbors organization has been, uh, great help, not just in, in the county of Greensboro, but it's also had been a tremendous help in the city of Greensboro, uh, so I encourage you to buy your tickets, uh, and, and come out and help support these, these organizations. Um, that's all that I have at this moment. Uh, you, counsel, if you have knocked out your tickets, please see city manager, let him know if your parents will be coming with you, wanna make sure you guys are there because you'll be receiving a gift as well. Uh, and I think that's all that I have. I do, I do have one personnel matter that I would like to discuss, so at this time, I'll ask that, uh, council will give us permission to go into executive session.
Motion to go into the next session.
It's been second, any further discussion? No further discussion, all those papers that have been on my resume right here. Thank you so much, you all, it was just.